Everyone had a chance to review the minutes from last meeting?
We did. I move that we accept the minutes from December 14, 2016.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Joseph Ferraro, family trust.
Doesn't look like they're in attendance.
Don't see anybody that I remember from the last meeting here. Will it continue?
I don't know. Nobody called. They didn't ask for continuance. As far as I know, they were supposed to be here by now. They had a site visit.
I went on the site visit with Marty.
With?
And Brenda. No report from Marty?
No. A bill, but no report.
Well, I knew that.
Well, I'd make the motion that we continue this hearing until...
Well, how about we leave it open in case they come in a little bit later and then we can come back to it?
Okay. Move on to number two.
One. Okay. Madison Homes.
Hi, Steve Gilbert, I'm S.F. Engineering. Here's the... We need both pieces challenged, yes?
Yep.
Take them both. We're proposing a new construction on Santa Street. You're familiar with the property. Madison Homes had just recently built two other lots.
I'm not.
Going into this property.
Okay.
I want, just want to know where you are.
We're on Santa Street.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Santa Street's along the street.
Stonegate's right here.
Who?
Stonegate, Subdivision.
So you're west of Stonegate?
Yes, we are.
You're on the north side of Santa Street but on the west side of Stonegate?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Stonegate is right here. There's one house here before Stonegate.
On the other side of the power line.
Yeah. This is the power line right here.
Okay, we know where you are though.
Okay, all right. Just recently, they did a couple lots to the left here. Madison Homes did. A couple new houses.
Yeah.
And we're to the right of those. Okay? So they're proposing a new lot, new home construction, and to put the house much further back than the other two houses. We're going to have a drive coming here. We've got an ILSF out front and we've got a BVW in the back. Okay? These were both located and flagged by Walter Hewittson. We located them and they were on the other plan so the line's already been approved by the Conservation Commission. He's proposing putting a drive in here. At the closest point, the drive is going to be 40 feet from the ILSF. We're going to put the house in the rear. At the closest point, the house will be 52 feet from the BVW. We made a point of keeping the septic system over here, 100 feet from both buffer zones. So the septic system is over 100 feet. I believe it's 101 feet from the BVW and 117 feet from the ILSF. At the closest point, the site, we have to build up this lot quite a bit. That's what all these red lines are. At the closest point, there's going to be about 32 feet to the driveway and 30 feet to the grading around the house, to the site grading, to the closest point of any disturbance or any raised elevations. So the house at the closest point will be about 52 feet and the associated grading will be about 30 feet from the BVW. And again, the driveway coming in at the closest point will be about 40 feet from the ILSF.
This is the boundary line here?
Yeah. Here's a wall line right here. What happened was...
Oh, wall line, okay.
Correct. If that's visible there, and what happens is they picked up this additional parcel to be able to make this lot billable basically, is what they did. That wall line is visible.
So how far are we here? 40 feet from the wetlands here?
Forty feet from the proposed driveway to the ILSF, correct, at the closest point. Here it's 50. You know, if it comes around here, it's 50 feet here, but that's the closest point, right the other drive.
No moving it on this side of the wall and then coming across, now keep it a good 50 feet plus away? Because you're still going to be working in this zone here. If you were on this side here, you would be a good 60, 70 feet away from the...
I don't know about that far. Maybe 50 though. Maybe 50 to 55, I would think, if you get on the other side of that. I mean, then you just have to clear the wall down too.
Well, only a portion of it, just where it's going to cut through. You're going to tear it down over here.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, this whole area is going to tear the wall down, so what's the difference if you come up here and make it another 20 feet?
I can see that point.
Then that would be a good natural buffer from that side all the way over and I don't know if he's going to do any mowing or not, but it would just limit him to one side.
Mm-hmm. I don't think that would be a problem. If that's something you desire, I don't see that being a problem.
Yeah, well, you've got to go through the wall to do that.
No, I understand. Yep, yep. You might just come along the side of the wall and just break through right here.
Yeah, yeah, just come up and...
And that's going to give you a minimum of 10 feet anyway, so instead of 40, it'll probably be 50 to 52 maybe.
And then you've got a natural barrier so that you're not going to be muddying up anything that's going to flow over when it does rain. Is the driveway going to be paved or is it going to be stone?
I'm assuming he's going to pave it eventually. He paved the other two. I'm just going by what he's done the other two, so...
Okay.
He paved them both, so I would think so.
Yeah, and then the stone wall will act as a filtering too as it goes through. I think that would have, you know, added benefits.
Yeah.
Let's see up here.
So patient barriers, the old line runs the whole gamut of the wetlands.
Yeah, here and here you wouldn't, yeah. It would just, it would make it a heck of a lot easier along that wall.
I think just follow this line and break it through right here. I don't see that being a problem.
Be an advantage.
Mm-hmm. I agree it's a natural buffer, so that's fine.
I don't have any other questions.
No, I'm good. The reserve area is outside the 100-foot buffer.
Sorry?
The reserve?
Yes, yep. Mm-hmm. Reserve area is even further away.
Okay.
Jim, check.
It's moved over. In the wrong way.
Don't have much wiggle room here.
No, no, it's like...
All right, just put this down.
There we go. Good engineering skills, Jim. The different buffer lines are highly around there too, if you can make them out.
Yeah, no.
The green's 50 and maybe 25 foot right here, the orange. The green would be 50 and the purple's 100. Same thing here. That's 25. Green is 50 and that's 100.
Okay. The edge of the driveway is... Oh, you've got 32?
32 of them are up, correct.
Okay. And the, okay, the hay bales will be at the 25-foot line?
Yeah, right about here though, just on the other side. I'd say 25 to 30-foot line over here, then I'm sure...
Yeah, so we don't get doses going in and backing up all over the place.
There's not much room to, I mean, they meet all of our setbacks.
Okay, the only thing that we've sort of changed is having the driveway go from this side of the wall to this side, to the east side of the wall, the driveway, so that, so then the stone wall becomes the... So when the order conditions are written, that the stone wall will become the natural barrier on the west side of the driveway.
I have no problem with that.
Right now, it's coming in here and so of course when the work, construction work, when they work through there, you know, you know you've got to get stuff going down, but you'll have the added, you know, the barrier across the wall which will keep it clean.
I don't have a problem.
That makes sense, yeah.
We would need a revised plan though.
Okay, that's not a problem.
Are you ready to build now?
I don't believe so.
Maybe we should continue it to next month and get a revised plan and prove it and away we go.
No problem.
Okay, I move that we continue the hearing until next month or revised map.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, see you next month. Thank you.
Charlie, you don't need me for those certificates, right? You don't need me for those certificates?
Not for the certification, no.
Thanks.
RDA request, application from Carl Stolff.
We want to get out of the house tonight.
Have you got too excited over television today?
I don't know.
Yeah. Well, I don't think Mr. Stolff, I think Mr. Stolff is in Florida.
Well, then we can contact him.
I will.
Motion to continue?
We need to make a motion to continue on with this hearing.
Make a motion, we continue it to the next meeting, February 8.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Carl, we'll get to some of them later. Site and Historical Society.
My name is...
Finally got somebody here.
It's the highlight of my night today. My name is Campuchico. I'm the treasurer of the Dayton Historical Society.
Charlie needs a...
Yes, okay. Who needs... This is the EBC for the Gazette. This is what we sent out. We have been given an opportunity to expand our parking lot. The town has offered to provide us with fill and crushed gravel for the surface of the parking lot. We own two lots. At some point, I think they get married, but we own two lots. We were given a lot in Bordala from the Reed brothers adjacent to where the house is located. And the town has offered to expand our parking lot. We have a small parking lot. We're going to go 50 feet down from Santa Street going east and 50 feet into our property from the edge of the road. We have a stone wall and then the parking lot will be after the stone wall. And we're going to have the trees cut down. We're donating three cords of that wood to the Dytens Lions Club for their annual auction. And we'll probably sell the rest if we have any left. They're going to cut it up for us. So I believe we're going to, we won't be 100 feet away from the buffer for wetlands. I see this, I'm not sure, what is that called, Charlie? This line here and the map here. What is this? Speaking of, I do have...
Is that the written stream, Charlie?
What's that?
Is that the written stream? Sorry, I don't know what the...
Shows on the map, Joe.
This map here, so...
That's the historical society, Santa Street and Williams Street.
Yeah, so we have this, now we're giving this, well, we purchased a lot in Bordala back in the 90s. So this frontage, additional frontage, is 99 feet, .74, and we go back over, I don't know if it's 160, 180 feet back. So we're going to be going into where this thing is here, so we're not removing any long worth like that. We're going to be adding. Phil, a lot of the town will be providing us with fill. It may be up to 2 feet.
Just in this, it's 50 by 50.
Right, and it will be sloped, going, sloping this way and sloping this, a slight slope. You can't have it too steep. Going this way and this way so that the water drains, as well as having crushed asphalt, it's going to allow the water to drain. So that's just...
Wait, with the circle, what's the...
The circle's got nothing to do with it, but this is the lot right here.
Right. So we have a resistant parking lot here and they're going to add to another 50 feet, 50 feet down Santa Street.
Where's the parking lot in this lot?
It's right over in the center. It's going to be right adjacent to it.
Okay.
And it goes back 50 feet also, and I'm not sure exactly how far it goes back over here. We already have an entrance.
You know where they are?
Yeah.
We have an entrance.
Imagine if it's more, Jim?
I've spoken to the building commissioner regarding an entrance. Right now, we have two entrances going into this parking lot here. We're probably going to eliminate two. We have to get a permit for that by the planning board permission. There is an opening in the stone wall over here. We'll probably utilize that. So we need, you know, additional parking. I'm not sure how familiar you are, but we've got a CPC grant from the townspeople, $125,000, and we've been doing a lot of work on the house. We have a few more things to do on the property and we're hoping to have a grand opening in the springtime. But this will give us an opportunity to have more parking spots for the public when they come and visit the society, visit the museum.
Okay. How often do you plan to have the museum open?
It's going to be open at least one day a week. It's going to probably be a morning, but we, on occasion, will have speakers come in on the weekend. We'll have some kind of events going on the weekend, but we're going to be open one day a week. We haven't finalized the date. We've got to go by our schedule. A few of us are retired, so we have an opportunity to pick whatever days could be.
We'll finish up and get to you.
Okay, thank you.
So... Anybody have any questions?
No. Is that the... Yeah, I was up at the site with...
Okay.
That's a 100-foot buffer. The circle part.
100-foot buffer of what?
Of the stream.
No, it's not.
No.
It would be over here then.
There are the maps, if I'm not sure if that helps.
I know I'm not working. The stream is right here and the buffer zone would be 100 feet, misdirection. I'm not sure what the...
Okay, we'll scale.
...gale that's here, but when I was out there looking at it with him, it looked like they were in a low within the buffer zone, but not... It's a buffer zone project.
Yeah.
You went out there and looked at it, Charlie?
Okay, here's your...
Yeah, that's a very...
Yeah.
They're doing the work over here.
Okay, there's not going to be any pavement on there, right? It's just going to be...
Crushed asphalt. I don't know if you've seen Highway to Park, we had a bunch of crushed asphalt there.
There's the edge of the line.
Yeah, okay.
And I don't know what 50 feet is, but it's well away from that.
Okay.
It's what it is in the buffer zone.
Okay, all right. Well, now I'm just looking at the, it's going to be crushed, so it will be permeable. And, okay. Is it marked, is it flagged now where you're going to cut?
No, not flagged.
Highway Development?
I believe they're going to, they're the ones going to create this for us and I'm sure they're going to flag it for us.
How soon, I mean, it's not going to be done... Well, once you get approval, it's probably going to take two, three weeks, right, to get it done? So you're not going to need anything to be done until, what, May anyway?
Oh, no, we're actually hoping, I know the Highway to Park, we're going to do a sort of, in fact, they wanted this to be a winter project for them so they can go in and cut the trees and cut it for us. You know, obviously it goes by your schedule. And then they weren't afraid of Phil, obviously, and the question asked. It's whenever, it's, hopefully it's going to be approved. Whenever that happens or if that happens, we'll begin the project. We hope to have an open house in May, if that's what you're asking from the society.
Yeah, it would be, it'd be good to see boundaries out here.
Yeah, it would be marked from the edge over at least 50 feet.
I would like to see the property marked on site for the limits of the work rather than just here and here. If we see the markings and, you know, we say, oh, yeah, that's a little too much, you can always say, pull it in 10 feet or something.
It's fair enough. This is a stone wall, isn't it?
This is stone. I'm not sure if you can call it stone wall anymore, but this over here is a stone wall with an opening over here, so the stone wall is...
Yeah, no, what I'm saying over here though, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
It is, this is Santa Street here.
Yeah, yeah, no, okay, no. I just had the map turned differently over here. Okay, so...
This is the extent, this is the extent from a boundary over 50 feet.
From the corner here to here.
Do they have 50 feet?
I measured it because one inch equals 40 feet, so it's...
Yeah, but that, I mean, this is just a piece of paper. We're not looking at the ground.
Sure, sure. No, if you want to have a visit there.
Yeah, if you put the side marker in and the rear markers in. However, we can see that's where it falls.
If Highway's doing the whole thing, ask them to stick a stick in the ground with the flag.
And, you know, and I'll be there too with measurements. I can go down there. I've got the wall to judge my 50 feet on and...
Okay, I'll talk to Tom Ferry and you want to pick a date now that you want to go over or you want me to talk to Tom Ferry first and contact the chairperson?
Please, talk to him.
Okay. I mean, I could be down there as early as tomorrow.
Yeah, it's at that convenience. They're doing this for us, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, I know, but I don't need him there, you know. I want to see this here and I want to see where the 50 feet is.
No, where do you want to put the flag, Charlie?
Well, I got a measure. I got a 200-foot measure.
And in the case, you'd be continuing the...
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be continued and then...
The woman in black has a question.
Mm-hmm. I'm at 1375 Santa Street. I did get notification of this. My only concern is cutting into Wetlands again because in the, over 20 years I've been there, I haven't seen anybody. Very few people use that parking lot that's there now. So I see where you're going to open up one day a week. I think I would like to see a need for expansion of a lot before we expand it right away and maybe this project doesn't take off off the ground.
Well, we've been, we've had a tenant there and we haven't been able to have it open to the public since 2012. So that's why you haven't seen two cars. You might have probably seen it this past summer in the fall. My truck was there today. My truck was there yesterday.
Right, and the most I'm seeing, two or three cars. I mean, I don't know what the size of the lot is, how many cars you're expecting to park. Can I say something?
How many cars, how many cars can park there now?
Maybe four or five if you really push it. Before we were closed, we were doing monthly programs, things like that. We've had as many 30, as many as 30 cars there parking all the way down Santa Street, causing safety problems. So when the town offered this, we thought it was a great fit because we have been closed since 2012. But we will have certain speakers that will draw 20 cars, sometimes 10 cars, but we've had 30 cars and he's been out there directing traffic because you never know who's coming, but when they come, it becomes a safety problem. When they come around the corner from Williams Street down and everybody's lined up parking on Santa Street. So that was why we thought this was a good opportunity when they suggested to get cars off the road when we have programs and just because it is a safety issue.
Okay, I'm going to come in. Okay, the stone wall, this wall going to be removed and then, so in other words, you know, I'm just looking at various options here. If this were, let's just say, if this was to be shortened even and then you have cars, one, two, three, four, in 50 feet, you would get five cars going this way.
We have to leave room for cars to back up.
I know, no, no, I understand that, Charlie, but I don't know, I want to see what's over here as well, what's already over here. And so...
There's an enormous sycamore tree.
Okay, well, that's what I want to, that's what I want to see.
Septic system.
That's what, that's what I want, you know, and, I mean, they may, they may or may not be able to get 20 cars in there just with halfing that. I don't know, Charlie. I want to take a look.
I don't either, but I mean...
I don't know. Maybe, maybe this is the best plan right here. I don't know.
Well, they don't have too many options.
No.
Can I, can I ask how many, how big a lot, how many cars are you trying to park in a lot?
Well, I'm not sure how many 50, like 50 actually ends up being as far as parking space.
I know with the tree, you're limited.
Yeah, we have a tree there, but everything else is coming down 50 feet onto the new lot that we have, 50 feet back from the road. But we've had yacht sales. If you've been there 20 years, you've seen that we cut yacht sales, plant sales, other events.
Yes, it's going to...
And it can get private and one of the biggest events was Paranormal.
Okay, but that lot's going to be over here.
And we had, it was really a parking issue.
That's where we have to go on these streets.
This is the end right here.
So, you know, it becomes an issue for that and we never really had the resources to open a lot. But when they suggested that they help us and do it, it's a good opportunity to get more cars off the road.
The lot is lower than the grade that already exists.
Right. It drops down right at the edge of, the first lot going to the second one.
Yeah.
If you take it as visible to everybody and get an idea of what we're talking about. I mean, in my opinion, it's far enough away from the stream itself. It's in the buffer zone, but that's why we're here. But if you lay out dimensions, then it's abstract right now. It's pretty tough.
Yeah, no, I get that.
But this huge tree would be a problem, you know. If you build parking lots right on it, it's not going to do it any good. And they do have a septic and not a heck of a, is a reserve next to the septic?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so that rules out, right now they have a little circular drive. There's no room to park over there.
No.
Right, we're trying to eliminate the circular drive, put more parking spots and just have one entrance and exit out of the property.
Yeah, I am. Yeah, that would, you know, and...
I'm the more immediate neighbor.
You what?
The new house right there on...
Right on the...
Yeah, right up the hill on Williams there.
You're on Williams Street.
Right, literally adjacent to the property, so once it is marked off, I would like a little heads ups and take a gander too, so... I mean, the whole wetlands, I'm impartial to that, you know, but I'm just, I'd be curious to...
And your way up, yeah, if you know it's your property.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm not worried about overflow, right.
You're not going to get water or anything like that.
You know, just, just curious on shape and volume and whatnot.
We didn't sign entry tonight.
It's over here.
Okay, so you're going to mark it. I'll probably be there before it's even marked, but I'll have my own measure that I will be able to see, then everybody else will be able to see it as it is marked. And then from, then we can act upon it next meeting.
Okay, motion?
I move that we continue it until February meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm going to be there tomorrow, so part of the day, so either we're there or we're not there, but I'm sure it's not going to be much tomorrow.
Okay.
A significant compliance with Stephen's back.
He was, it's a certificate of compliance. I looked at him Saturday after New Year. It complies with the order conditions of the lots they built on Santa Street. It complies with the order conditions, both of the lots they built on Center Street.
Okay, I move that we issue the certificate of compliance to Stephen Babbitt, for Center Street, map nine, lot sixty-eight.
Second.
One more second.
Second, aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's one, wait a minute.
We're not going anywhere.
I'm moving, thank you.
Charlie? Charlie?
Yes.
This payment, Nova Armstrong, eleven-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars, is that for the site visit that she did?
With you and, and Brendan, Brandon.
Inch deep.
Huh?
Pretty expensive.
What can I tell you? She submitted a, an estimate.
That's a big, that's a big parcel. It's a big parcel she had to work, and go through and map it.
Oh, no, no, this was ju, I asked Charlie if this was just a site visit she did two weeks ago.
She visited the site with Brandon Fanna?
Yes. Is that what this bill is for?
For the complete, yeah, the complete work.
She's already built with the work.
That she did to map it out, so this is just for that site visit.
Yes. And the public meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Well, you can wait until we have a public meeting, don't have to approve it tonight if you think it's, uh...
Oh, no, no, it's just that I just thought it was a little steep.
But she submitted a, an estimate for it.
All right.
Now, what's that, goes by, must go by lot size, that...
I don't know what it goes by, but, or maybe how many steps you're making in the lot while you're making a site visit.
Well, she has to give an estimate, so it's gonna be by lot size.
I don't...
And, you know, some, some lots are gonna be easier than others, depending upon how thick they are.
Well, I corresponded with the first hearing that we were supposed to have, that no one showed up, by Joseph Ferrara Family Realty Trust.
Well, those two, yes, but those two, Nova and Fanna, must have notified each other that they weren't showing, although, because they both didn't show. Okay, we held off on that, and they, and here it is a half hour after the beginning of our meeting. I'll make a motion that we continue that hearing until February.
Second.
Which one?
First one. Up here, the top one.
Joseph Ferrara Family Realty Trust.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we had locked before until they came.
Now, how about Stonesrum?
That's already continued, they're not here, he's not here.
I don't know why nobody showed up, I was there, and perfect to all the decisions that Fanna and Marty made.
Well, you know, maybe Marty's gonna put the map and, and see if, if they, uh, superimpose their, their septic system in the house on the lot.
Well, the site visit was to determine whether the fertile pools were, in fact, fertile pools. And, and that's what she went and did, I don't need that.
That's the bill.
Yeah.
You gotta sign it.
I just don't understand why there's nobody here.
I'll make a motion then that the, we approve payment for invoice number six-four-one-three for Nova Armstrong Associates.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's money in that account, Charlie, to pay for that?
Yeah, there is.
All right.
You enriched the account, you have to sign the bill, so it's for invoice.
I did.
Well...
Say it from...
Can't all have a fit.
Yeah, she gets like that.
Okay.
Received notification from National Grid. So I can reply herbicides to the power lines, right? And that's, they're taking out the power, and that's a good pesticide boy, it's a good, I agree, but it's bad. Our remarks are included. Please, I want you to give a complaint. Certificate. Quick and bang off all parts, driving crazy. That's for six-two. This is six-three.
You want six, sixty-eight dash two, and lots plain sixty-eight.
Oh, here we go. Six-three, six-three.
Where's the second one? Now, you can, does your computer spit all, all of these out?
It spit out what?
Does it spit all these out, or you had all these forms in there?
Yes. On the thumb drive.
Do you have a copy of Stonesrum application?
Yeah, I've got the whole file there.
You're not gonna write in pink?
That's a pencil.
Oh. Are we all set?
Yeah, so.
Tony, you got a question? Talk to him then.
Drop in.
All right.
I move that we close the meeting.
Second.
One more second.
Aye. Aye. Good night.